I'm the town moderator. And keeping with past practice, if there's no objection, what we'll do is, before we call the meeting to order, we will hear from our state representative and two of our state senators. First would be Logan, you want to lead off?
Hello. Nice crowd. So yeah, Logan Nicole, you're our state representative. Representative Bloodlow from Mount Holly in Truistberry. I guess I'd just start off by saying that I think I missed the deadline for the chit-chat. But like, I don't know, I guess I missed it by a day or two, but I thought I was on time. But I did, I just finished drafting like a little mini legislative report. This is about the halfway point of the session. It's something we call crossover in the state house, which is about the time where a bill has to pass the house to make it to the senate on time to be considered. Technically, it's the end of next week. So it's a good time to kind of take a step back and see what we've done on the house side, what they've done on the senate side, and you know, what you can expect to see by the end of the session. I would just say, you know, obviously this last week was a very long, long week. We, there was a lot of action in the house. We overrode the governor to raise the minimum wage at the beginning of the week, which seems like years ago at this point. And then we, because it's the end of that session, time of year, there were a lot of big bills that were just coming out of committee that have been being worked on for the entire session until now, which was the Act 250 Reform Bill, the Tax and Regulate Cannabis Bill, the Bill to the Global Warming Solutions Act, and some other major bills that are really coming out of my committee, which I have a lot more, you know, just a lot more hands-on experience with. The Older Vermonters Act is a bill which really tries to prepare us for, you know, I hate that the, just with the way that some people phrase it, but a lot of people are, are starting to talk about the worries of having an aging population in the state. And they talk about the fears of by 2030, one in four Vermonters will be over 65. And that is, you know, that demographic presents some challenges. So a lot of people talk about it as like this scary existential thing. Yeah, I kind of, I really don't like that, just because I think that it kind of demeans older Vermonters. Older Vermonters are a resource, they're not really something to fear. But, so in my committee, we've been really trying to take a look at what we can do to recognize older Vermonters as a resource and make sure that we have systems in place to prepare for that future. And so that's a really big bill. All of that is in this report. I just printed up a bunch of them at Staples and just didn't have time to go pick them up. But I will try to leave them probably at the Belmont General Store and maybe the town clerk's office. And you'll see them in there. Otherwise, I'll, maybe I'll try to submit them to the Mount Holly Newsflash or the articles at least made online. Otherwise, I don't know if we, Truistberry, we do questions? Can we do questions?
We don't have time. They can meet with you in the back if they'd like to.
You can meet with me in the back if you'd like. I also want to get to my own town meeting. We have a couple of big articles on the agenda. But I will hand it off to our senators.
Good evening, I'm Dick McCormick. I'm one of your three state senators along with Alice Nidka, who is well-known to you not only from her work as your senator, but having represented you in the house. And Allison Clarkson is your, the third of us. And we can't be every place at once. There are 26 towns we're trying to get to. So she's giving our apologies someplace else right now. I serve on the Appropriations Committee and the Health and Welfare Committee. There's entirely too much to talk about to really do it justice in a few minutes. And I don't want to take more than a few minutes because you have your town affairs to get to. So when I'm done, I will hang around in the hall for a while if anyone wants to talk to me. Let me just say first of all, on the Appropriations Committee, where we handle the budget. And we do it basically in two ways. One is right now, we are working on the fiscal year 2021 budget, which will start on July 1st. Earlier, we did the Budget Adjustment Act, which was midway in the present fiscal year. The budget is based on estimates about the future. The budget is based on best guesses. And obviously, some guesses turn out not to have been quite on the bullseye. And that's not to say that anyone made a mistake. It's to say that you, you project based on what you know, and then halfway through, you realize, okay, this is costing more than we thought it would. We got a little extra money here, this is costing less. This revenue source was disappointing. This revenue source has given us a little more. And we make the necessary adjustments. It's just like pulling the car back when you pulled it a little too far to the right. Or to the left and you straighten it out. This year, both on the Budget Adjustment Act and on next year's, next fiscal year's budget, there's not an awful lot of controversy. The revenues are about what was expected, a little better. Most of the agencies coming in on their budgets have not asked for eyebrow-raising increases. And so things are going along fairly politely. We, the entire committee is responsible for the entire budget. But we also divvy the budget up among ourselves and each of us is responsible for a portion of the budget. I just met today with the Agency of Education. And I also do the Tax Department. And just to, which is not to say, for example, with education and taxes, we don't, we in the Appropriations Committee don't deal directly with things like the revenue sharing on, you know, the state education fund. We deal in the committee with the agencies that run those things and figure out how much it's costing them to run things. And again, I have not seen an awful lot of controversy. It's been fairly pleasant. One thing is that I'm convinced we don't, the state is not providing as much as it should to the parent-child centers who do, I think, wonderful work. And of course, there's a constant push, different people pushing for what they want. I'm pushing pretty heavily for the parent-child centers. On health and welfare, Vermont is 5,000 nurses short of our need. And I will be reporting a bill when we go back next week. It was voted out of the committee unanimously to have Vermont join the Interstate Nursing Compact in which a nurse with a license from one state can practice in another compact state on her home state's license, rather than having to get a new license. And similarly, a Vermont nurse will be able to practice out of state. Unfortunately, neither New York nor Massachusetts are in the compact at this time. But it does seem to be growing. As we are contemplating joining, it appears that Alabama is about ready. And with Alabama and the entire southeast is in the compact. A lot of northeastern states are not, but New Hampshire and Maine are. And if Vermont is, that's a little cluster. And that is one way of addressing the general shortage of healthcare personnel. I think I've used up my five minutes. So I want to say I will again wait in the hall for a little while if anyone wants to talk. Thank you so much for letting me visit your town meeting. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alice Nidka from Bloodlow. Appreciate being able to speak to you. I presently serve on the Appropriations Committee with Dick and on the Judiciary Committee, which, the Judiciary Committee deals with the courts, prisoners, corrections, any bill that has a penalty in it. And so there's a few more things. But there's a wide variety of issues in there. Appropriations is, as Dick said, the budget. We will have a balanced budget this year, as we have had for many years, even though the law does not require it. It's very hard to get a balanced budget every year, but we've been able to do it. There, as Dick said, not a lot of controversy this year, although there are certainly areas in which help is needed. You know, we always think of transportation. And just recently, you may have noticed that every single road seems to have a lot of little frosties and some, some big ones. So the amount of paving that the, that the state does is limited by the number of people working in the business and the amount of money. So I think we're going to spend 100 million. And that's really all the state can handle doing. You know, there isn't, there aren't enough paving companies. And of course, there was always the terrible experience that we had a few years ago with Route 103. That was more than just not people being available. Anyway, that was a mess and I'm glad it's fixed. But the other thing that's in the budget are of course, as Dick said, childcare. There's fish hatcheries, there's daycare, there's food, there's the school. You know, the schools are rolled into that as well, even though there's a separate education budget. There's the National Guard and the Air Guard. And at this point, there's a shortage of workers for those also. The Air Guard is seeking 300 recruits. And the Army Guard is seeking 200. They're that number short. And so last year, we put in a scholarship for recruiting to the Air and Army Guard. Scholarships were being offered in other states, New Hampshire being one of them. And so Vermonters, instead of joining the Vermont Guard, they were joining other state's guards in order to get that scholarship money. So we certainly wanted to have something on an even keel to attract them to join our guard. Let's see. In judiciary, we're working on something called Justice Reinvestment. In other words, working with a national group to try and get more prisoners out that are eligible to leave prison. In other words, there are, there are right now, I think, 230 prisoners who have reached their minimum sentence. And you know, at least 150 are eligible to leave, but they don't have housing or, you know, they may not have taken safe programs with regard to some kind of training that they needed to have before they left. But the idea is, you know, corrections is costing us a fortune. And we also have quite a few prisoners out of state that it would be good to bring them home for the most part. There are some who have special needs who will always be probably in a special unit out of state. So that's, that's a big thing. We're also doing a lot of, another big bill is expungements. In other words, you know, in the old days, so to speak, there were a lot of arrests for marijuana possession, some for selling. And so those, those crimes right now, if it's small amounts, they've been eligible to be expunged. In other words, you, you go to court, they have expungement days, and they look over your whole record, see what you've been doing. Have you paid your fines? Have you paid the surcharges? They've done all the stuff and you might be able to have your record expunged. They're doing thousands of them in Chittenden County, surprising that. You know, there'd be that many to do, but it's through many, many years. And now we have a bill that's moving toward even expunging some felony records. Recently, a woman came in to testify, 56 years old. Raised her family, she has two children still in school. And she, when she was about 22, married with a couple of kids, owned her own home. She came from a family that had challenges, that's for sure. And one of her brothers was into drugs, was into some stolen property, planted it on, planted it, I mean, put in her shed on her property to hide it. And she was subsequently arrested. Today, that would be a diversion case probably. But in those days, that many years ago, she was, you know, 23 or something. She wound up going to jail, even though she had very young children, went for 45 days, and she has a felony on her record. And that's the problem for her. So here she is now, 56 years old. She's led an exemplary life, raised her family, except for the two kids still in school, and has had a job all these years. And she doesn't dare leave that job because she's afraid her record, you know, will show up and then she'll never get another job. So she went to school, got her job to be, got her, her education to be a teacher and is, you know, has all of that. And she'd like to be a teacher, but she can't because she has this felony on her record. So this bill that's proposed would help her out. And there are so many people who have come in who have these, you know, they're not in criminal mind anymore. They did a lot of performing in their youth, some of them. But they've been straight and, you know, so that's one of them. There's another bill that is disturbing for many people, and we'll see where that goes. It's a bill about life without parole. In other words, you wouldn't be able to sentence someone to life without parole. You know, we don't have the death penalty in Vermont. So many people who have committed heinous crimes do wind up getting life without parole. So this, excuse me, this bill, which is going on around the country in places, is to not allow somebody, not allow a judge to sentence someone to life without parole. So this is, as I say, very controversial. Because some terrible crimes have been committed and people don't want these people getting out, even though they may have been rehabilitated in prison. Still, the crimes are so bad that others don't want them out. So I don't know where that bill is going. So another bill that you might like is a bill about insulin. In other words, if, we heard from people that they're paying sometimes $900 a month for insulin. So a bill passed the senate that caps the amount a person can spend on insulin at $100. This is going to, there's a lot of work to be done on this still and it hasn't gone, it's going over to the house. It's involving the insurance company. So they're working on that. And another, another great thing you may have not have heard about is the lottery. Now, the lottery is something that's been around for quite a long time. Every year, it gets for the education fund about 22, 23 million. That's been going on in that amount for several years. This past year, 2019, they, they were able to raise $29 million. All go straight to the education fund after expenses and payouts. So you know, some people don't like gambling, but we do take advantage of that. So there it is. That's a nice, nice amount of money for the Ed Fund. Let's see, I guess pretty much that's it. Let's see. Oh, there are something, some of you might be following. Nine constitutional amendments that are pending. And I've written a thing and it'll show up in the chit-chat about what those are and, you know, whether you might like those or not. To pass a constitutional amendment is quite a hurdle to do. It has to pass this legislative body that's elected now. And then it has to pass the next legislative body that's elected. And if it passes them, it can't be changed. It starts one way and it's going to stay that way all the way through. And then it goes to the public to vote on whether the public would want the constitution changed with regard to these nine issues. Some of them may not move at all, probably, maybe most. It's hard to know, there's one or two that might. So anyway, that's what's going on. Call me at home, I'm in the block or whatever. So thank you very much. Oops, I'm sorry.
Also, in keeping with past practice, we have, when there have been elective offices for which there's a contest, we have had the candidates, if they care to, spend a minute or two introducing themselves and sharing a thought or two before we begin the meeting. So we have two individuals and which one would like to lead off? Looking for somebody to reach out for Mike. Okay.
Those of you who don't know me, I'm Ron Tarble. Born and raised in Mount Holly. Raised my family here. My parents born and raised here. And my parents have been on the board for three years, seeking another three-year term. I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeff Chase. I'm running for select board here in the town. I've lived in the town for over a decade here with my wife Beth, who works at the school here, plus my two little kids who go to school here. My background, I work for Casella Construction as a project manager, where I'm a managed project such as the Brandon Route 7 project, the Bennington GFOA projects replacing water, or installing the water line. I've worked on the Starling Dam five years ago as a project manager. And during Irene, I worked on the recovery efforts, including the washouts on Route 4 in Mendon, getting that cleaned up. I'm running because my background in construction, it gives, deal daily with dealing with budgets, dealing with state agencies and meetings, and project planning. So I think those, those qualities would help in this town. Also, my background in engineering would help with problem solving and developing creative solutions for town issues. My priorities are make sure we have open government and communication. I want to make sure everyone has a voice and encourage involvement from all of you. I support the highway department. I think my background would be beneficial to helping them with planning capital improvement projects and just, I have a strong background there and I want to help out. I also support all the town's essential services, such as fire, rescue squad. Lastly, I want to make sure that in dealing with budgets in the town, that we efficiently use our tax dollars and make the most of it. So I have an eye out for that. In closing, you know, I just, I'm here because I want to give back. And several years ago, I applied for a planning commission opening. Had, we had kids, didn't have a lot of time. Lately, I've been getting involved in projects here at the school, plus Saturday days. I have the center press at my house and spent way too much time trying to fix that up. But I enjoy it, I enjoy it. We moved to this community because, because everybody is really good here. So I'm at a point in my life where I, I think I can give back and I hope that you vote for me. And please consider me tomorrow when you vote. And I thank you for your consideration. And I'll be available at the end here if anybody has any questions. And I'll be around tomorrow at the polling place. So thank you, everybody.
I just want to share a couple of thoughts, which I do each year before we get into the meeting. They are, Robert's rules of order are the basic rules for the order of this meeting, except where Vermont law takes precedence. All motions, remarks, and discussions must be addressed to the moderator and confined to the matter at hand. Especially, please wait for a microphone. You may have a loud voice and people might be able to hear your voice. But the microphone is going to allow people to really understand what it is that you're saying. And please state your name before speaking. Vermont state law prohibits consideration of articles that have not been warned. Binding action cannot be taken under other business. My role as a moderator is to help you accomplish the business that you intend to do. Raise your hand, please, if you don't understand what is happening or if you think what is happening is wrong and that you want to do something, but you don't know how to proceed. Remember too, it's your meeting. The body, you have, you have the ability to challenge a ruling that I would make. Only registered voters may vote at the town meeting. And with those of you who are not registered voters, please raise your hand. And I know that's not you, you have a question possibly? Hang on a second, one of these things, can we get a microphone? Mary, that bothers me if you have a microphone. Who do you want to watch?
We should not pause. Do the pledge of allegiance. Be reminded to brand that flag as the blood that's been shed so that we can be here tonight.
Did you carry a joint? Lead it. Why don't you lead us?
Surely. If you would, stand, remove your hat. I pledge allegiance. Give the flag. United States of America. Here in the public, which stands, when they, the legal, liberty of justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, any of you who are not registered voters in the town of Mount Holly, would you mind raising your hands, please? So you, you can speak to an issue if the body does not have an objection to that and we suspend the rules. Okay. The legal voters of the town in Mount Holly, Vermont are hereby notified and sworn to meet at the Mount Holly Elementary School at 7:00 PM in the evening, Monday, March 2nd, 2020, to act on the following articles, Articles 2 and Articles 14. On Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, to vote by Australian ballot at the Mount Holly Town Office, polls will be open from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM to vote on the following articles, 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13. Articles may be discussed at the seat if undidued. Article 1, to elect all town officers as the law directs. That's by Australian ballot polls mark. Article 2, to act on the auditor's report. I need a motion from the floor so that we can act on this. Somebody care to make a motion?
I'll vote.
Okay, Paul Madden, make the motion. Second by, and that's Lynch. Is there any discussion? Yes. You'll get the microphone and vote. State your name, please.
Steven Michelle. I'd just like to know what happened to the auditor. Inasmuch as there's not an auditor's report.
So would someone on the Select Board want to discuss that?
The auditor that we planned to use again, his telephone lines have been disconnected, his house in Mendon is vacant, and his website has been canceled. By the time that he realized that he wasn't responding, it was too late to get another auditor. Probably, a new auditor will do something after income taxes and be planning to do the next year. It'll be a two-year commitment at least to that.
How much are you paying? How much did you pay him already?
We haven't paid him anything for this year.
So the question was how much are you paying? And the answer was it's nothing I can pay to this one.
So to get the new auditor, you have to put it out to bid?
Let's get a microphone.
All right.
Mr. Michelle.
Sorry. I'm just trying to continue, sorry, just trying to continue. In that case, to get a new auditor, you have to put it out to bid, I assume. You just can't find one to pick one up, replace him in this short time.
Well, then there aren't that awful many auditors in the state of Vermont. Not every town has an auditor every year. We have for over 20 years. So we're not a very big town, so if they want to do a dope job, they might not look favorable. We haven't had auditors from Essex Junction before. It's quite a haul. Hopefully, deal with things. And the last, this last one was at least in Rockland. And that was the only one, the only, the only one available. It was another firm that was interested in how it would be the first one to be asked to consider us again.
The motion, don't floor or accept the order before, or there is no discussion.
Mr. Moderator, I would argue then that we shouldn't be taking any action on the audit. Let's do some of them, sorry.
So would it be, I'm sorry, we have another hotline in the back.
Hi, Mark, it's stating that, I mean, so A, what are we acting on? There's no order to report to act on. And just from my experience when I was in the town, crap, we haven't elected an officer who was the auditor of the town. Why don't we have an internal auditor to do the work and to act on that report?
Well, we have, I think, I think a couple of points. One would be, I think, the question would be to act on what was included in the report. I understand that's not in Hollywood. I understand that's not in Holly. Uh, the other, I'll let, I'll let that speak and then the part where I understand why that's not an option.
So, so our town auditor, Dennis DeProwe. And our town auditors are not required at this point to have an auditing background. That's why we have outside auditors too. So our auditors are really the town report committee. They work on putting together the town report. They don't have to have the financial background to actually do the audit. I don't think probably anyone would do it on this table.
So one of the options, if you've got another hand.
So I'm a little confused. I think in the past, we've voted on the auditor's report that's still in the town report that we've been voting. So are we voting on the financial audit that didn't get done because we didn't have a audit, a, a financial auditor? Or are we voting on accepting the town report?
My understanding, and I could certainly be corrected by one of the select board, was in the past, we actually voted to accept the auditor's report rather than the town report as a whole. If there's somebody that feels that I'm mistaken on that, then, otherwise, what I suggest is that one of the options, lacking a, an auditor's report from an independent auditor, would be that the body would have the option to pass over this item. And that would be passed over until a later date to be determined. That might be the next town meeting when we all gather together. But that would be something, that would be a possible option if somebody would want to move that. Motion has been made by Mr. Herbst that we pass over Article 2. Is there a second for that? Second. Second by Paul Warren. Is there discussion on that? We have the gentleman in the back. Could we have your name again, please?
Again, so it, it seems like we have an auditors committee who did a great job and did not, we're, we're voting to commend their work and say it's right. It just has not been verified by an outside independent auditor, which is not necessarily always necessary. That's a doubt.
Well, I, so I think, again, I think the issue is that there's a concern that we don't have an auditor's report as we have had in the past.
What we don't have is the verification of our internal auditors and that's okay. If we're voting on what the town auditors did, I think that Article 2 is fine.
Well, the, the auditor's report, the motion on the floor right now is to pass over what is in the town, what is in the town report. Now, if the body would choose not to pass over this, then it would come back to a motion to accept the auditor's report such as it is in the town report right now. We have another.
I'm just curious, do we already have a motion on the floor to pass it the first time that we need to deal with first? Or am I wrong?
Uh, it was, it was moved and it was seconded and then it was, and then there was another motion made to pass over. That, that's, that's a good point. We had a motion on the floor and we can, again, the body can either vote for that or the body can vote it down, in which case it would not have been approved and there would be another motion that could be made, Mr. Herbst had made to pass over it until a future time. So let's stay with that initial motion, which had been made to accept the auditor's report. If there's no more discussion on that, all in favor, now what we're voting is to accept the auditor's report as it is presented to us in the town report right now. Is everybody clear about that? That, actually, the motion to pass over was incorrect because we had a motion on the floor. Motion on the floor had been made to accept the auditor's report. So we do need to deal with that first.
I move to delay the auditor's report.
That would be passing over, but we do have a motion on the floor right now and we have another, another hand up.
Hi, Steve Hazelton. My understanding is that the motion to table is ex precedents and is not discussable.
A motion to table is for something repeated to be determined on the same meeting day. It is not to move something to a future date. And very often you find something that a motion is tabled to a future meeting, which is an incorrect use of the motion to table.
Just one clarification on that.
We have, Mary.
Just a point, Paul Warren, just a point of clarification. If we vote to pass the auditor's report, we are voting on a report that doesn't exist. Is that correct?
Well, if you vote to pass the auditor's report, you're voting to pass the auditor's report as it, as it exists in the town report right now, which is not consistent with past auditor's reports, which have been rendered by an independent agency.
They say it's an auditor's report. Where is the auditor's report?
Is it an auditor's report? I, no, that's not a judgment for me to make. I would, I would ask Dave Johnson, our town treasurer, whether or not he would throw that. We have another comment from the floor though.
Yeah, Ted Crawford, just quickly, in previous years, we haven't had a formal audit we voted on auditor's report. There were three elected people from the town of Mount Holly who served as auditor. They presented this report. If you look at previous town reports, it is a financial statement about the financial well-being of the town. So the precedent is we pass the auditor's report and then we wait for the audit to come in from the financial person to be informed of where we stand. But I think we're making a big thing out of the three elected officials.
To, to clarify, in other words, what exists in the town report today is not inconsistent with what had been passed in prior years. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
So I would call for a vote now then, all in favor of passing, of approving the auditor's report as it is in the town report? Would you please signify that by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
I believe if the ayes have it, I'm going to rule that the report has been passed. Article 3, does the town vote the following budget for the fiscal year 2021 to be raised by tax? The general fund of $4,468,620, the highway fund of $362,900, for a total of $831,520. That's an Australian ballot. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, we'll move to Article 4. Does the town vote $26,430 for the greater lease payment fund and $65,000 for the asset equipment fund for a total of $91,430 to be raised by tax for the fiscal year 2021 for future capital expenditures? That's an Australian ballot. Is there any discussion on Article 4? Hearing none, Article 5. Does the town vote to the Mount Holly Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated an operating budget of $53,500 for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year and vehicle replacement fund of $45,000 for a total of $98,500 to be raised by tax? That's an Australian budget item. Is there anybody that would like to speak to that? Yes. We have a microphone coming to you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Brian Buffum. I'm president of Mount Holly Volunteer Department. We would speak to them. Just wanted to thank the town for their continued support. Without you guys, we can't do what we need to do, get all the equipment we need. Our budget actually went a little bit down this year from what we had going last year. So that should be a good thing for you. Other than that, I also want to thank everybody for the mailer. Everybody sent in some generous donations and we really appreciate all that. Other than that, we've got a pretty good amount of our firefighters here with us tonight. I just wanted to say thanks to all them because without them, all the equipment's not going anywhere to do anything. If anybody wants to join up Thursday night up in Selma, they're monthly meetings, come on up to the happy, we'll put you in.
If there's no more discussion on Article 5, we'll move to Article 6. Does the town vote to the Mount Holly Volunteer Rescue Squad Incorporated for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year budget to be raised by tax? $15,000 general budget fund, $15,000 vehicle and equipment replacement fund for a total of $30,000. That's an Australian, Australian ballot item and speaking to that.
Hi, I'm Brett Harlow, who I've been with the Rescue Squad for a couple of years now, since 2018. And the reason I got on the squad is because I couldn't find any better way to give back to the community than to serve people at their worst time with me. And I, I find it very gratifying. I feel like I'm really making a difference and if you feel the way that I do, we have our meetings, the second Monday at 7:00 at the Rescue Squad and if you would be interested in coming on board with us. Right now, we have 14 members. We have five advanced EMTs, four EMTs, three EMRs, and two drivers. Our newest EMT is coming on now, is, is a thing, is currently a course, a UDM, because they're coming to EMT. And we had one member who moved from an EMT to an AEMT. So we have some pretty advanced people to help out in the time of need and we're pretty grateful of that and, you know, we're hoping to continue on with educating our people. We responded to 106 calls last year. We have 14 members and as I mentioned, we're always looking for more. We'd like to thank the fire, fire crew for helping us out so many times. You guys come through for us. And we'd also like to thank the town crew for cleaning up the driveway for us and helping us out. And most importantly, we'd like to thank you all, all of you people here who have supported us over the years and helping us help you. So hopefully we can commit to do so and look forward to serving the community in the next
Any more discussion on Article 6? If not, we'll move to Article 7. Does the town vote $12,000 for the Mount Holly Town Library to be raised by tax? Australian ballot. Is there any discussion on this?
Hello, everybody. I'm Joe Galbert. I'm the new library director. I'm also a resident of Mount Holly and I would like to thank the town for its continued support of the library. Your generous support represents one half of our operating budget every single year and we couldn't do it without you. I'd also like to thank our really great library board and all of the community volunteers that allow us to stay open five days a week. And I also would like to let you know that the other half of our operating budget every single year is raised through fundraising efforts around town and the generous donations from folks from this community. And I'd just like to say thank you very much and encourage you all to come by the library with your ideas, your suggestions, and requests for such, because after all, it's your library.
Any more discussion on Article 7? If not, Article 8. Does the town vote $2,000 for the Mount Holly Chit Chat to be raised by tax? Australian ballot.
Good evening. Diane Garrow, our editor-in-chief.
I'm sorry, could I have your name, please?
It's too proper, I'm sorry. Diane asked me to read her statement to the group type, she's out of town, well deserved vacation.
Uh, you need to hold the microphone close to your mouth.
The Chit Chat has been Mount Holly's source of hometown news and information since March 1974. In 2007, Chit Chat Incorporated, and at the organizational meeting, the Chit Chat Board established its policies regarding advertising, submissions, and membership. All individuals donating to the Chit Chat became its members and membership donations from you all today continue to be the Chit Chat's primary source of funds. The Chit Chat Board also voted to seek an annual appropriation from the town. And this year, the request is for $2,000 to be set aside to defray our costs of mailing and production. We thank you all for contributing to the paper and your membership donations and advertising and content submissions help keep our paper in print and in your homes every month. A special thanks goes to Don Reiser of Express Coffee, which is our printing company, to Heather Garrow, Jeff Keller, and to Roger Garrow for their hands-on help with labels and sorting, and also a thanks to the board of directors. I'd like to thank, thank you for your support in your vote tomorrow and ask you to show your support for our editor-in-chief, Diane Garrow, who more than anyone else deserves our thanks and appreciation.
Any further discussion on Article 8? If not, we'll go to Article 9. Does the town vote for the following, the following for community and social services totaling $8,485 to be raised by tax? Again, this is an Australian ballot item. The American Red Cross, $500. The Mount Holly Barn Preservation Association, $100. Bennington Rutland Opportunity Council, Community Action in Southwestern Vermont, $550. Rutland Mental Health Services, $1,302. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, I have to keep the law straight sometimes. BNA and Hospice of Southwest Region, $1,313. RSVP and Volunteer Center, $100. Southwestern Vermont Council on the Aging, $400. Regional Ambulance Service Incorporated, $620. Vermont Adult Learning, $500. Black River Good Neighbor Services Incorporated, $1,000. Vermont Association for the Blind and Visually Impaired, $150. Housing Trust of Rutland County, $500. Marble Valley Regional Transit District, $300. Vermont Center for Independent Living, $100. Green Up Vermont, $150. Child First Advocacy Center, $400. Neighbor Works, $500. Is there any discussion on that? Yes. Hang on for a minute.
I'm Annette Lynch and I'm the president of Mount Holly Barn Preservation Association. I want to thank you all for 15 years of your support to our organization. This is our 15th year of being, as far as I know, the only town in the country has its own barn preservation association. What that does for us, besides helping us with our postage and our postal box, is that we're able to say that you support us when we go out to find other sources of funds. And I just wanted to add today to our report that's in your book that, that we have, Mount Holly got three barn grants this year totaling $35,000 and that there are only 19 grants that are issued across the whole state of Vermont. So we are doing extremely well and wanted to thank you all very much for your role in
If there's no further discussion on Article 9, we'll move to Article 10. Does the town vote $3,000 for the Black River Area Community Coalition to be raised by tax? Again, Australian ballot. Is there any discussion on that?
Paul Fianza. I'm the executive director of the Black River Area Community
I am the executive director of the Black River Area Community Coalition, otherwise known as BRAC. I'd like to thank you for all your support over the years. Uh, we're entering our 17th year of service to this community. Our mission is to take a proactive approach to preventing youth substance use and violence by promoting a healthy, involved community, supporting all youth in safe environments. Our community is encouraged to get involved in promoting healthy living to benefit all youth and provide them with the tools to become responsible community members. Underage drinking, use of marijuana among our youth and the misuse of prescription drugs are still our main priority. We continue to work in all our schools from grades K through 12. Although we are losing Black River this year, we have already started relationships with Mill River High School and Green Knott High School so that we can offer prevention programming to our students. We have offered parent information events on a host of topics, from the use of electronic cigarettes to internet safety. We continue to promote the use of prescription drug take-back boxes and take-back day events. In the past year, we have presented information to our fifth and sixth grade classes here at Mount Holly on drug prevention during Red Ribbon Week. We hosted our 14th annual after-prom event for Black River High School prom attendees. We partnered with the Two Rivers Supervisory Union Go Wild Summer Camp, presenting week-long programs on let's go fishing and the promotion of the 40 developmental assets. We recently recognized local retailers who pass compliance checks in our efforts to curtail the purchase of alcohol by underage youth. Our next meeting is Wednesday, March 18th at the Fletcher Memorial Library in Ludlow. We will be serving pizzas starting at 5:00 PM, followed by our meeting at 5:30. Child care is available and we welcome everyone, especially our youth. Thanks again for your continued support and please vote yes on article 10. Thank you.
If there's no further discussion on article 10, we'll move to article 11. Uh, does the town vote to fund the after-school program at the Mount Holly School in the amount of $6,500 in fiscal year 2021 to maintain state grant funding in the amount of $23,840 to be raised by tax? Australian ballot? Does anyone wish to speak to that?
I'm Julie Goray. I'm the sixth fourth leader of the Mount Holly After-School Program. I want to thank you so much for all of your continued hard support of the Mount Holly After-School Program. The After-School Program is funded in part by the town of Mount Holly, a 21st Century Grant and parent fees which are used for enrichment activities. The money allocated by the town of Mount Holly is used to ensure that the 3 o'clock to 4:30 homework and reading club portion of our program remains free to all families. The After-School Program provides a vital service for Mount Holly's families, providing quality after-school care, academic support and enrichment activities to the town's children. We're open from September to June, five days a week, from dismissal until 5:30. Out of 97 kindergarten through sixth grade students enrolled in our school, we currently have 63 Mount Holly students attending the after-school program, which I believe speaks to our ability to meet the needs of our working families. Some students attend primarily for the homework and reading time assistance. Others choose to stay on for various enrichment activities. Many students attend all five days or during parent-scheduled working hours. Others choose to attend on certain days, specifically for the extracurricular activity. We offer enrichment activities, including STEM, cooking, physical indoor and outdoor activities, tinking crafts, carpentry, sewing, Taekwondo and movie making with Okemo TV. We have seven licensed teachers currently assisting weekly with homework time tutoring or enrichment activities. Again, I'd like to express how appreciative we are for your support of the program. Our goal is to offer quality academic, social and extracurricular learning opportunities for students while providing necessary support to the young Mount Holly families. Thank you.
Any more discussion on article 11? If not, we'll move to article 12. Does the town vote $750 for the Okemo Valley TV to be raised by tax? Australian ballot. Does anyone wish to speak to that? Hearing no one, we'll move on to article 13. Does the town vote $2,500 for the Mount Holly Community Historical Museum to be raised by tax? That's Australian ballot. Does anyone wish to speak to that? Yes.
Good evening. I'm Paul Levin. I'm president of the Mount Holly Community Museum. We have never asked for funds before. We've been able to get by with donations and with fundraisers. Over the last couple of years, we struggled a little bit to make ends meet. And this is the town's museum. We have an incredible collection of artifacts and, uh, we, all the Mount Holly school's children visit the museum over the course of their K to sixth education, uh, eight, uh, eight times. Uh, one grade visits twice. So, we also have programs for, uh, hikes, educational programs over the course, both of our activities take place in the summer over the warmer months. But, uh, so, this year, we are asking for the first time, uh, for some support from the town so that we can, uh, make ends meet and, uh, we hope for your support. And hopefully you'll vote for article 13 tomorrow. Thank you.
Is there any additional discussion on article 13? If not, before we move to article 14, I'd like to just take a moment to correct an oversight that I made at the beginning, which was to allow the members at the front table here to introduce themselves. I'm going to hand the microphone down and let them do that.
Sue Cavala, town clerk.
Jennifer Matthews, select board member.
Mark Kirkel, select board member.
Ron Tarble, select board member.
David Johnson, treasurer.
Next, uh, next and last article is article 14, to transact all other necessary and proper business. Is there any motion that anyone would like to bring before the body under article 14? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. So, moved by Mr. Herbst, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lynch, Ms. Lynch. Thank you.